All right, good evening, everybody. This is the Wednesday evening, November 8, 2017, session of the Portland City Council. Carla, please call the roll.
Are you Daley?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman, Wheeler?
Here. Thank you all for being here tonight. East Portland is a great example of a thriving and diverse community. People of all races and creeds call our city home, and nowhere is that diversity on display like it is here. I want to thank Commissioner Fritz for your leadership in making sure that the city council meeting was held outside of City Hall. I believe this is the first time since 2009. And thank you, Laura Wintergreen. Thank you, Laura Wintergreen, advocate for the East Portland Action Plan, and to David Douglas High School for hosting us here today and putting together a great agenda for this evening. Just a few quick points. When you hear testimony, you may hear testimony that does not comport with your own opinion. We just simply ask that everybody treat everybody with respect. That means, please do not interrupt people's testimony, do not interrupt council deliberations. There'll be plenty of time for everybody to have their opinion heard, and we just simply ask that this be a safe and welcoming and inclusive environment here tonight. So with that, I'll turn this over to Commissioner Fritz.
No.
Great. That's what my script says, so I'll take it back.
Oh, hang on a second. Well, I thought you were going to do the presentations first.
Okay, well, let's get to that. Now, we have some invited testimony from the local community, some folks who have offered to come up and share their perspectives, and we'll start with Lori Boyson, who's with the Division Midway Alliance.
Thank you very much. I'm Lori Boyson. I'm the executive director for the Division Midway Alliance. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you in East Portland. First, I will briefly address the Division Transit MOU. As a member of the original steering committee, DMA fully supports both of what Kim Marks and Katie Larcelle will be talking about with that MOU later. In the spirit of cooperation, in early 2017, DMA signed that MOU. However, we would not have signed it if we had known that the city of Portland was not going to allocate general fund monies to support the business support and community outreach for this fiscal year. Fortunately, Prosper Portland was able to fund those items through other resources, but with no future funding guarantees, concerns arise for those needed programs. And now I'd like to address the Outer Division Multimodal Safety Project. This project will have more impact on our community than the transit project will ever have. Today, I represent the local business owners and organizations with 332 employees, 50 businesses of which are concerned about PBOT's pilot safety project design. As the letter before you contends, we approve most of PBOT's safety project design tools. The reduced speed limit, speed cameras and reader boards, contiguous sidewalks, additional signalized crosswalks, and street lighting along the south side of Division are promising improvements for our area. The tool we do not support is the proposed Center Island median design that will extend from 80th to 156th avenues. The medians will limit business and residential access through both Jade and Division Midway. U-turns with left turns will be at designated areas only, and the design will severely limit parking and freight. We maintain that median installation will have severe economic impacts on the many auto-dependent businesses located within our district. Lack of street connectivity will further exacerbate the problem because motorists are unable to simply go around the block to access the other side of Division. Inadequate infrastructure further prevents delivery vehicles from making U-turns, which will further impact commerce. We suggest the following: install the agreed-upon mitigation measures now; then after a period of time, assess traffic analyses for effectiveness; and only install medians as a measure of last resort. If medians are required, we ask PBOT to collaborate with business and property owners to establish a median design that will allow left-turn access to businesses and residents. We bring our concerns to you because PBOT's project timeline is driven by an emergency ordinance that was passed in late 2016. We implore city council to direct PBOT staff to work with community to make the necessary adjustments needed on the project's design. Implement the agreed-upon elements immediately. Assess these elements over time and work with business owners, represented community members, and groups to establish an agreed-upon median design that will allow for left-turn access and parking for businesses and residents.
All right, good. Thank you, Lori, for your great testimony. I don't know if Nita Call is here. I believe Nita may have had to leave. Is Nita here this evening?
Can I come down?
No, sorry. He cannot come. Kim Marks, are you here? Come on up, sir. And Kim represents the Rosewood Initiative as well as the East Portland Action Plan. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Ms... What's this? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Kim Marks, and I am the Director of Transportation Equity for Rosewood Initiative. I have also served as the representative for East Portland Action Plan for the Division Transit Project. On December 7, 2016, this council approved the locally-preferred alternative for the Division Transit Project. As part of that approval, council directed city officials to develop a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with EPEP and other community organizations to meet our concerns about the project. I am here tonight to report that no MOU was reached that we could sign, and why. In my testimony last December, I made it abundantly clear that EPEP saw the conditions of approval as totally inadequate with respect to our concerns, thus the need for the separate MOU. Instead of sitting down and discussing the contents of an MOU with us, we were presented with a cut-and-paste document containing the same language from the conditions of approval, which was already signed by Metro and Trimit. It is difficult to believe community involvement in government processes is taken seriously when the government treats community representatives in such a disrespectful manner. In addition to process, we had and still have substantive concerns about the contents of the conditions of approval and MOU, which include: Portland Housing Bureau has not adequately addressed concerns about the number of units allocated for East Portland along the alignment. 100 to 125 are slated for East Portland, while a large majority of units is west of 82nd Avenue. Nor has an actual plan been developed, as PHB is waiting for properties to fall into their lap as opposed to actively seeking properties. At the same time, PHB, Metro, and Trimit are working on a very robust housing strategy for the southwest corridor. While the... What's the difference? A belief in housing in East Portland is not needed, a recognition that the Division Transit Project is woefully inadequate project with limited impact, both. The city failed to include funding in FY '18 budget for business technical support and workforce enhancement for the MPI's of DMA and Jade to mitigate negative impacts from the project. We do not have any guarantee that this money will be forthcoming in future budgets. Further, the actual transit service is a reduction of access to transit due to the elimination of approximately 50% of the existing bus stops. I also want to note that, after your adoption of the LPA, or locally-preferred alternative, Trimit has eliminated three of the East Portland stops and moved one from near the county clinic. EPEP and other community members negotiated in good faith for these stops and their locations. Given the quick changes subsequent to all jurisdictions adopting the LPA, it is difficult to believe the good faith was reciprocal. Although PBOT is investing in safety projects along the alignment, we do not believe they are adequate to the needs of Outer Division or taking community concerns about design into account. It is also worth noting, many of these projects were approved prior to the Division Transit Project and have been delayed due to that process. In conclusion, EPEP is always interested in working with all jurisdictional partners in improving our community. We did not withhold our support for the Division Transit Project lightly. However, when we do not believe a project will benefit us or may be detrimental to us, we must do just that. We hope the project will be a learning opportunity that will lead to true community input for future projects. Thank you.
And if I could just quickly respond to one of your issues, because it's very important, Mr. Marks, and I appreciated you meeting with us last week as the East Portland Action Plan and going through some of the data and some of the recommendations in the East Portland Action Plan. And I was very pleased to see improved investments, the line going up, both in terms of investments around parks and investments around transportation. I was personally very disappointed to see that the trend line around affordable housing was not commensurate. And I'll say tonight what I said then: As the Housing Commissioner, I expect us to do better. And so with the passage of the $258 million bond, with a realignment of the Portland Housing Bureau, with an increased focus on the needs of East Portland in terms of making sure that people are able to gain a foothold and keep a foothold here in East Portland, that's my personal commitment to you. And so I appreciate you bringing that information back and continuing to be not just an advocate, but also a valued partner. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Katie Larcelle from the East Portland Action Plan. Come on up, Katie. Good evening.
Good evening. So, dear council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. It's an honor and a right to come and speak to you as my elected representatives and the elected representatives of the city of Portland. So I'm going to talk about three different projects: the Gateway Education Economic Development Center, citywide budget committee review of geographic spending, and just a little bit on the Outer Division Safety Project. Or, actually, I'm not sure if that's the... I might be putting those two things together, the Outer Division whole project. So I wanted to talk to you about the Gateway Education Economic Development Center. And I imagine, Mayor Wheeler, that you probably heard about this when you came out to visit. And so as you know, the project is about bringing workforce development to East Portland, front and center at Gateway. It would be a center for high school students during the day and after-hours for adults. As envisioned, the center would be in the Oregon Clinic parking lot and would have lower-level spaces for small business development. With the small business development, probably including retail and restaurants, it would also act as an amenity for Gateway. It's a concept now, but it's a concept that has more possibilities for funding than it had when it was first proposed. In other words, it's always been a worthy project, but it is more viable than it's ever been. There are now dollars that school districts can put up for it through the state of Oregon, through the career development dollars that they have, and the National Community Reinvestment Coalition is in talks with East Portland Action Plan. This is a project that is in the Portland Plan, and it's one of the city's commitments to East Portland in that plan. The city has endorsed it at the highest level in the past. There is still, though, a gap between the East Portland Action Plan and the local school districts and their concept plan and an actual plan, with dates and partners signed up to begin operation. We want a ribbon-cuttings one day. The only thing that seems to be missing is that clear commitment from you that would give Prosper Portland that unequivocal direction that this center needs to happen. We need you as a convener on that project.
Sorry, maybe I'll just keep it on. Thank you, and I appreciated the opportunity we had to meet with the Director of Prosper Portland the other day. And we have a series of follow-up, I won't call them questions, but issues that we'd like to work together to address. I think it's a very, very compelling vision, and like you, I have shelves full of visions and I have shelves full of plans which were never enacted. You have good partners, you have the East Portland Action Plan, you have representatives of the school district who are the right partners, and we've only got a limited time period left in the urban renewal area, and we really haven't fully utilized the resources that are there. So I'm committed to continuing this conversation and seeing if we can't get something going there.
That's great. Thank you very much.
And I appreciate all the time you've already taken to work with me to help me understand the vision. I think it's very compelling.
Wonderful. Thank you. So then the other thing I wanted to bring up was about geographic mapping, geographic spending. And now, the city budget office has a wonderful system they developed several years ago. When I was on the budget committee for the city, it maps out geographic mapping, geographic spending by bureau. And I am here to urge you to use that mapping system. It's already been developed. The monies, it's already... The money's already been spent, so you just need to use it. I think you need to ask for it when you have your city budget meetings. And I know that equity is a high priority for the city, and here is one way to measure it: with that geographic mapping.
So Katie, during this last year's budget process, I directed the city budget office to actually put the mapping live on their website, so that tool is now available. And I'd encourage people to look at it. If there's other variables that we should be putting into that mapping system, let us know, because I'd like to continue to improve it.
That's great. And use it in the budget... Use it in the budget process. And then I was asked to speak about the Division Transit Project, and not because I'm... And I... No, actually, I asked to speak about the Division Transit Project. And it's not because I'm an expert on the project. Both Kim Marks and Lori Boyson know much more about the details of it. They have been on the project teams and have followed it on every step of the way. I just want to say that as a planning and sustainability commissioner now, I read the plans that come through the commission. I'm getting regular updates from the planning team on the southwest corridor. And yes, I know it is a bigger project, and it's a light rail project. However, they are mapping out where low-income and ethnic communities live in the southwest and planning to mitigate against displacement in the southwest plan. It's... They're all about that. And I just have not seen that kind of commitment from the city on Division. So here is the deal: is the Division Transit Project a transformative project? Then it needs the kind of planning that would mitigate against displacement. If it's not a transformative project, well, that's too bad also, because that part of Portland, along Division, needs a transformative transit project. So I think the project needs a bigger commitment from the city in terms of displacement mitigation. And you've heard other complaints about this project, and I just want to echo from my point of view on the Planning and Sustainability Commission. I just see this very different way that these two projects are being handled. So, all I have to say.
Very good. And Katie, thank you, not only you for your testimony, thank you for your service on the commission. And you are absolutely right to demand that transportation, planning, and housing all be worked together, because the fact of the matter is, the last time we did a significant transportation investment, a light rail, the yellow line, there was a lot of good intention around not displacing people, but it wasn't backed with actual resources or investments.
Mm-hmm.
And so it didn't happen. And thus, I have been very aggressive with the southwest corridor, because we're still very much in the early planning stages of that, and I wanted to make sure that anti-displacement strategies were front and center in that conversation. And I'm sure you read some of the reports. It's a bumpy ride. There's a lot of people who don't necessarily want to inject that conversation into what they see as a pure transportation play. Well, there's no such thing as a pure transportation play anymore. We have to talk about housing, we have to talk about displacement. So I do applaud that, and Commissioner Saltzman could not be here tonight as transportation commissioner, but he has representatives here listening to your testimony. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it very much. And last but not least, Khan Pham from Apano. Welcome. Thanks, Katie.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you some of the struggles and the progress here in East Portland. My name is Khan Pham, and I live in the Jade District. I am a parent of a three-year-old daughter, and I work at Apano as the manager of immigrant organizing. As a Jade District resident and the manager of immigrant organizing, I hear stories of my neighbors every day. My Mexican-American neighbor walks her two daughters to school every day, dodging racing cars, first of all because there are no sidewalks, and then because they have to cross Division, one of Portland's deadliest streets. My elderly Vietnamese neighbor is sharing a room with another elderly woman on the bottom floor of a house that they rent from the family that lives there. Together, they make money by taking care of the children of other immigrants who are busy working two jobs to make rent and pay the bills. In many ways, the work that we're doing is a struggle for the very soul of Portland. The decisions that city council makes will determine whether or not working-class immigrants, the people who work hard in our restaurants, our grocery stores, our nail salons, and our schools have a place in this city. Is Portland going to be a city where they can live and raise their children, or is it going to be an exclusive enclave that only wealthy people can afford? 82nd Avenue, where the Jade District is located, is in many ways a dividing line that separates who has access to jobs, safe streets, trees, clean air, and safe places to play. We want to thank city council for taking some important steps to support our anti-displacement work in the Jade District. We appreciate the significant investments that you've made to support the 48-unit Affordable Housing Complex on 82nd and Division, as well as your recent investment of $100,000 to support a community cultural center on the bottom floor as part of Apano's Roots to Rise campaign. At the same time, we want to challenge council and its staff to approach its work in East Portland in a more holistic manner that incorporates the needs of both residents and local businesses. Right now, two big neighborhood projects we're working on are the Outer Division Multimodal Safety Project and the Division Transit Project. We're excited to see the city invest in needed safety improvements along Outer Division, where our community is still mourning the two recent pedestrian fatalities from last winter. At the same time, we are concerned about how the loss of parking spaces and turn lanes for freight will affect our local businesses. We encourage the city to work with us, to think creatively about how we can redesign Division Street, perhaps using tactical urbanism to make the street safer while also considering the needs of local small businesses. We need to be able to invest both in affordable housing and stabilizing businesses at the same time that we're making plans for transportation infrastructure. When doing transportation projects, we can't just look at Outer Division Street alone. To meet our Vision Zero goals, we have to look at the neighborhood as a whole, including the side streets. One of the reasons that the businesses are scared to give up parking and turn lanes on Division is because no one can park or turn on side streets that are unpaved and unlit. We can't build safe and connected neighborhoods by working on just one street. Likewise, we can't solve displacement with just one affordable housing project. We want to thank council for investing in this first Jade affordable housing project, and we look forward to working with you to advance a holistic strategy to build much, much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I want to thank all the community members who prepared presentations and testified tonight. That gives us a fantastic overview and some very specific projects that we need to look at. Colleagues, I don't know if you had any further comments before we move into the next item? Very good. Carla, please call the first item, 1220.
Prosper Portland Report on Affordable Commercial Framework.
Colleagues, small business plays an important role in the city of Portland. We have more than 21,000 small businesses with fewer than 50 employees. These businesses employ approximately 147,000 Portlanders. Small business ownership is a wealth-creation opportunity for Portlanders of color. In Portland, early-stage companies contribute disproportionately to net job creation, and small ownership... Business ownership is a common path to increasing family wealth. Retail trends continue to be important. The city has seen dramatic increase in real estate prices and retail rents and a decrease in vacancy rates and the availability of small-scale retail locations, which has especially impacted neighborhood business districts. There's a clear need for an affordable commercial program. Given these challenges and opportunities at this particular time, there's a need for a robust program to support small businesses that both address affordability concerns as well as technical assistance to make business more resilient in a changing market economy in our neighborhoods. And equity inclusion are central considerations, both of process as well as the outcomes of projects, programs, and investments with public dollars. And that's why I've included affordable housing and affordable commercial space in developments in the Lentz Town Center, for example, to ensure that we build economic opportunities while strengthening communities. With us today to represent the... Present the report on the Affordable Commercial Framework, we have Kyra Strausman, who's the Director of Development and Investment from Prosper Portland, and Allison Wicks, who's the Project Coordinator for Prosper Portland. Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. I'm Kyra Strausman. I'm the Director of Development and Investment for Prosper Portland. I'm also one of Portland's newest residents. I moved here from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where I had a very similar role at their Urban Redevelopment Authority, and I also oversaw, among large-scale real estate projects, the Main Street Program, and much of our commercial work with small businesses. I'm happy to be with you today. Part of what encouraged me to move here for this job is the level of innovation and commitment to equity and inclusion that I saw in Portland, Oregon. We're going to provide a report that looks at work that I haven't been involved in, so I'm not going to take credit for, but my colleagues at Prosper Portland and Allison have been spearheading this effort, so she's going to give you the details. You know, affordability is an issue, Mayor, as you point out, not just for people and their housing needs, but it's also a pivot point for businesses. As our business areas become more interesting, for national investment and for local investment, prices are going up. And what are we doing in government to help ease the burden on small businesses in particular? So we obviously have major projects that we're working on in Prosper Portland that we own the real estate. We started investigating early on last year how we could allow for some repository of affordable component on the ground floor of some of our major projects, and you're going to hear about that tonight. But this is the opening of a framework conversation around affordability for commercial projects and for businesses in a small scale in our neighborhoods that are growing. And the price pressures are potentially threatening some of these legacy businesses. So we're eager to hear from Commissioners about not just the projects that we're currently working on in a pilot form, but where you see needs to address other scale of issues. I think we've got technical assistance on deck to help people, but I think we've got more that we can do, and we're eager to hear from the Commissioners about what we ought to be doing in addition to what we're going to show here. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Allison, who actually knows the guts of the project. the program and our pilots, and we're eager to hear feedback from you.
So one housekeeping item before we turn it over to Allison that I forgot, and it's an important one. Some of you noted that we have sign-up sheets outside this door for all three of the items tonight, and if you'd like to sign up on this item or the subsequent two on parks, the sign-up sheets, I'm told, are right outside this door. So if you want to go ahead and sign up, just make your way there and sign up, and then we'll know who you are. I apologize for not saying that upfront. Sorry, Allison.
Great. So, good evening, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. My name is Allison Wicks. I'm a Project Coordinator with Prosper Portland. I've worked at Prosper Portland for five years, mostly in the Lentz Urban Renewal Area and the Gateway Urban Renewal Area, so I'm excited that my first City Council presentation is here in East Portland. I'm here tonight to provide a report on our recent activities related to commercial affordability and to share about our pilot efforts. And as we prepare to move from this pilot phase into refining our Affordable Commercial Framework, we'd like to hear from you and the community on your input and guidance on what we should consider as we move forward. So this is an overview of my presentation. I'll move through our current policy and market context, share about our pilot projects. We have four ongoing projects that are currently up and running, and then briefly go over our proposed Affordable Commercial Framework, and then share next steps. So, starting with policy and market context. As we heard from Mayor Wheeler, small businesses provide jobs to Portlanders and are a cornerstone of the Portland economy. Small businesses --
Can I make it sound a little better?
Thank you. Small business and local businesses face a daunting retail environment. Not only are they dealing with national trends in retailing, but local businesses are also seeing more competition from regional and national retailers. And we're seeing small businesses deal with the impact of the Portland real estate market. In addition, business owners from communities of color have traditionally had a more limited access to financial resources, whether through traditional lending or through family and friends' resources. The city of Portland has seen a dramatic increase in retail rents and a decrease in both vacancy and available small-scale retail locations. This has especially impacted Portland neighborhood business districts, and in some cases have resulted in displacement of small businesses. We want to be sure that as we're seeing redevelopment start in East Portland, in Lentz, in Gateway, in the Jade District, that we see it as an opportunity to build in affordability for local businesses from the outset. At the national level, communities of color have a lower average net worth than their white counterparts. Hispanic households have about 12% of the average net worth of white households, and black households have about 10% of the average net worth of white households. Prosper Portland sees small business ownership and development as a common path to increasing family wealth, and that our Affordable Commercial Program can be an opportunity to remove barriers for business owners of color to access markets. The purpose of our Affordable Commercial Framework is to provide a package of tools that supports businesses to face these changing market conditions. This is an overview of the three pieces that make up, the three types of tools that make up our Affordable Commercial Framework. Affordable Commercial is not just one thing. It's not a reduced rent rate or free space. It's a comprehensive set of tools. These tools can be divided into three buckets: access to space, business coaching and technical assistance, and financial support. Our framework has the same goals as outlined in the Prosper Portland Strategic Plan to support businesses from, that are underrepresented within the business community. Underrepresented, underrepresented business owners include communities of color, women, and business owners from low-income neighborhoods. So we have four ongoing pilot projects. We have Alberta Commons in north-northeast Portland, Tenth and Yam Hill Garage Project downtown, as well as two projects in East Portland and Lentz Town Center, Lentz Commons and Oliver Station. Each of these projects are testing a different tool around access to space, but all three include all the three components of the framework. In addition, we're working with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability on a mixed-use zones, affordable, commercial floor area ratio bonus, and we're still in discussion around what type of technical assistance and financial support would be included in that program. At Alberta Commons, at the corner of MLK and Alberta in northeast, Prosper Portland is piloting a master lease from a private developer. We've secured about 1,000, or 5,100 square feet within this development and aiming to tenant it with four different tenants. Those tenants will receive a year of small business coaching with MISO, as well as space planning with an architect as they're getting ready to move into the space, as well as a tenant improvement package and space build-out assistance. We've been, the Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, they're one of our small business technical assistance providers and partners. Yep. Throughout this project, we've been working with a retail teneting advisory committee that's made up of local experts, developers, business owners from the north-northeast community that has helped guide our work with this. Downtown, this is our project that's furthest out from hitting the ground, but we are piloting a 10-year master lease with a public partner here, so working with the Portland Bureau of Transportation to master lease the ground floor space in the Tenth and Yam Hill Garage. There'd be wraparound technical assistance for the businesses that move in, as well as assistance with tenant improvements. This is a great example of an adaptive reuse project. And then our two Lentz projects. So these are across the street from each other at 92nd and Foster. In the Lentz Commons project, Prosper Portland is owning and developing this project. It has about 7,500 square feet of ground floor commercial space, and we're targeting half of that, so about two tenants, for affordable commercial businesses. We'll assist businesses with their space planning or merchandising, and then also provide a tenant improvement package and a reduced rent. Oliver Station is across the street, and we are working with the developer of this project, Palindrom Communities, to provide affordable commercial space within his project. We have secured a tool called Consent to Let from a private developer, so we are leasing or working to lease 4,000 square feet within the building to affordable commercial tenants. Those tenants will also receive the same space planning, architectural assistance, as well as, in exchange for this designated marketing period from the developer, they're offering a reduced rent, and Prosper Portland's bringing a tenant improvement grant to the table for the tenants.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Maybe. How, if people are interested in becoming one of these small businesses, how do they get in touch with you to apply?
They can talk to me here tonight, and then also go to our website. We have websites live for both the Lentz projects and the Alberta projects, and we're also, we're working with brokers to help us communicate with the tenants as well.
Do you have any other ways of getting the word out to businesses like the Mercado or other places where there might be people interested to, you know, really broadcast this opportunity, because it sounds fantastic?
Yeah.
So, Commissioner Fritz, I think it's a great idea that, you know, we do a great deal of outreach activities, so we're, you know, constantly going to business fairs and sponsoring them, frankly. I think it would be good for us to put marketing material around this Affordable Commercial Project, so we'll take that up.
I have a question as well. What's the criteria for determining whether someone would qualify for one of these affordable spaces?
So, I wonder if we could sort of get through the framework and then collect these questions, but to just address that one, does part of why we have these committees around the teneting is to help inform that conversation? So right now, we're sort of in policy creation, so we're trying to grapple with what is affordable. You know, that's a relative term. You know, what are desirable outcomes for the teneting is, you know, really a lot of what we're relying on, these committees to help us address. Different communities have different needs, there are different gaps they have in their retail environment that we can address, so, you know, we're just trying to collect from the grassroots good information about those locations.
So our proposed framework has three different types of tools, as we spoke about earlier. The first is access to space, so we want to pursue public and private opportunities to tenant spaces. The publicly managed options are a Prosper Portland Master Lease, Prosper Portland Ownership, and as well partnership with City Bureau. So, you know, we're currently negotiating with the Portland Bureau of Transportation, but I think there's also opportunities with ground floor space within Portland housing projects or other underused, underutilized city spaces. The second type of access to space would be around privately managed space, so this is leasing agreements, similar to the Consent to Let that we're using with Oliver Station, as well as the mixed-use zones Affordable Commercial Bonus would fall into this category, because we'd be working with private developers who wanted to access additional FAR on their site, that they would need to offer ground floor affordable commercial space. The second tool in the Affordable Commercial Toolbox is around business coaching and technical assistance. So we want to continue our work with the Small Business Technical Assistance Partnership, which includes organizations like MISO, the Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, Apano, Hacienda CDC, the PSCU Small Business Outreach Program, and others. And we want to continue to grow and expand that efforts to better serve businesses that are moving into this phase of their business. In addition, financial support is an important part of the Affordable Commercial Framework, so we want to work with lenders and Prosper Portland tools to achieve greater access to capital. So this is existing Prosper Portland loan and grant programs. One example of how we're already doing this is with our prosperity improvement programs, when we're giving storefront and tenant improvement grants along Foster or in the Halsey-Widler Corridor. We're asking that businesses have a five-year lease in place. In addition, we want to pursue opportunities to be able to have these programs citywide. So our next step for our Affordable Commercial Framework is an ongoing evaluation of these pilot projects and an accounting of our lessons learned through marketing, the teneting, the build-out of the tenant improvements, and the operations of the projects. We're going to continue to coordinate with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability on the mixed-use zones Affordable Commercial Bonus. This is something that'll go through Planning and Sustainability Council, and then to City Council as a part of the code reconciliation project. Then we want to continue to conduct market analysis and outreach to small businesses and business districts to refine and ground-truth our approach. And then, in early 2018, want to convene a Affordable Commercial Advisory Committee. We currently have committees working with us on the Alberta Commons projects, and a retail teneting advisory committee on the Lentz projects, and a stakeholder advisory committee for the mixed-use zones Affordable Commercial projects. It would be great to have a kind of universal committee that can help us think through this comprehensively. And then, in addition, we want to continue to explore new resources, alignments with bureaus, and new funding tools to be able to launch a broader technical assistance program. So with that, I want to thank you for your time tonight, and I also want to ask if you have any questions. We want to know what you're hearing and what role you see City Bureau's playing in these efforts, and what further questions you want us to explore.
Commissioner Fritz? Commissioner Fish?
Thank you very much. Thank you for an excellent presentation, first of all. And this, for me, is a long time coming, and I want to offer a perspective to think about this, this opportunity. About nine years ago, during the teeth of the recession, the only cranes that were in the air in our city were, in fact, affordable housing development. Today, we lead the nation in cranes that we see across the city for market rate, mixed-use development. But in the teeth of the recession, when things weren't getting built, the one area that we had some skill was cobbling together the financing and doing affordable housing. And so that's where you saw the cranes. And for those of you old enough to remember, the Obama stimulus money was also used to help backfill at a time when the tax credit market had collapsed and other things. So it, what I observed, let's say, 10, nine years ago, is that we were building very attractive affordable housing developments throughout the city, but we never really viewed the commercial spaces as a community asset. In fact, in many ways, we got it completely wrong, because we said to the nonprofit developer that whose skill was in, in building affordable housing and providing services to people, we said, "Oh, and by the way, you're going to be responsible for the commercial spaces." So in response to that, the nonprofit community struggled. They had to finance that space, because the code said you had to have this commercial space, so they had to get financing to add it. It was not in their wheelhouse to know how to market it and sell it. That was not their core expertise. Some figured out that it was just easier to consolidate all their operations and some of their developments. So Reach moved all their headquarters into Gray's Landing. The, the commercial space in that building was condominium, so they bought the condominium space. But I also remember that the commercial spaces in these buildings around the city remained empty for a long time. And I think it remained empty in part because there was a stigma attached to the kind of housing, which is ridiculous, but I think the stigma exists. And I think there was a, I think there was a problem in that we were asking people whose expertise was in one area to do something that was outside of their core expertise. And so let's take the lesson of that and your pilot, and then figure out where we go forward. If we were to say that every time we invest public resources in an affordable housing development around our community, and we create this commercial space, if we treated that as a community asset, then Prosper Portland would be at the table in each one of these deals, saying, "We want a long-term lease," and I know that some of these leases you've negotiated are 10 years, and 10 years is better than nothing, but 100 years would be better, and we have 99, we have 99-year covenants on a lot of the affordable housing. So you'd be at the table saying, "We want a 100-year lease on some commercial part," or "We want to acquire it," because some of this stuff is, is a condo, and you want to buy it. The city should be in a position to give you a favorable set of terms. The developer is going to be relieved that you're providing financing to effect, effectively help develop it. And then, what have we created? We've created a map that's like even more robust than your, your pilot map, that has properties throughout the city that we are renting to people at an affordable rate to jumpstart new entrepreneurs and to advance our equity agenda. And so the one piece that, that I hope will happen as you go through the pilot and you show success, is I hope, Mayor, we institutionalize this. So every bond project, every investment we make through the Housing Bureau, I would go further and say, everything we do in partnership with Home Forward, you're at the table picking commercial space that you think has long-term value, and either buying it or getting a long-term lease, and creating an inventory of this space, which I think, I think for too long, we, we did not see as a community asset. And I think you are correctly viewing this as a community asset that you can leverage and it fits within your wheelhouse, but I want you to have more of it, and I want you to have leases that last 100 years, not 10 years.
Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I think what I'm most concerned about is having an open and inclusive process for advertising this opportunity, because I think there's literally thousands of businesses that would like to be involved in this program. So I don't need to hear it now, but that's something, and over the next few weeks, I'd really like to know what I can do to help to get the word out, and how you're going to then deal with 1,000 businesses, obviously not 1,000 spaces. Thank you.
So Commissioner Fish, you know, really beautifully contextualized the challenge. I can tell you that, you know, what's happening here is an innovation nationally, so-- so it's not like we've got a, a lot of examples to run from, uh, run with. Uh, we're kind of creating the road that we're walking on right now here in Portland, Oregon, um, on a commercial affordability setup. I think where we're headed is where you're talking about where we have an ongoing repository and partnership, particularly with the Housing Bureau, as you pointed out. We're, um, uh, already working with them at 106 and Halsey and, um, working on a project with Human Solutions, who's the, uh, project developer. We've got, um, some arrangements around the ground floor retail that will put it in that repository that we're talking about or that you're envisioning. So, we're eager to build this out and to publicize it better and to get, um, more concrete on the details and have, um, more of these spaces available as we move on on major projects. There is a cost associated with making, uh, the, um, spaces more affordable. You talked about the issue of expertise. Part of what happens in the real estate market is that you've got housing as one type of an asset class, and affordable is a subset of that, and you've got commercial as kind of another one. And how you finance or the financing structures are complicated even at, at a market rate. So, you have financiers that will only finance commercial and you have financiers that will only finance housing. So, getting them to partner up has been an issue for the industry that we're in, which I would say is community development for a long time. So, I think it's exciting to see Portland willing to innovate around this, and I'm encouraged by your leadership. So, we're hoping to bring more of this to light as we move forward.
You know, I think that it, someone 20 years ago who, who, who saw the future could have acquired leases in every one of these buildings and had-
Yeah, where would we be today?
You know, I, I, my, um, appetite is suppressed these days, and so I substitute by watching a lot of food shows.
Not as satisfying, I imagine.
No, but it adds to my bucket list. And I was watching a food show the other day where, um, in Paris, the company that makes the most famous hams in the world, uh, buys them, cures them, packages them, sells them, the, the greatest hams in the world, took the entire ground floor of a public housing project on the outskirts of Paris.
Oh, neat.
And I thought, "What a, what a wonderful story." And they, by the way, they create job opportunities for people who live in the public housing. See, that's the key. And, and, uh, as long as I'm on the council, I would like to see us be creative about how we put together the financing because I think we should have a local fund that does this. I think we should work with Mercy Corps. I think we should encourage you to use your non-30% money to become investors in these projects, and we should figure out a way where you're held harmless, but we maintain an inventory of affordable space. And if we crack the code on this, because we're building beautiful buildings all over the city, then we're creating an inventory that's very special and, and it can be curated and filled with the community desires in mind, not, not just the, you know, whatever fast food restaurant wants to go in there.
Well, we definitely have, um, a commitment to a similar vision, and we're excited to see how that plays out. I love the, uh, concept of having Mercy Corps involved and really understanding how we can finance this on a profound basis. You talked about 99 years. You know, let's look at what that would really cost to have that preserved because I think you're right. You know, retail is often a cultural hub for many communities, and what looks like, you know, just another barber shop to one person may be the heart of a community to, you know, many others. So, we're talking about preserving significant businesses in addition to creating new space. This is all part of our overall vision, so we, we're encouraged by your leadership and interest.
Commissioner Udaley?
Well, Commissioner Fish mentioned 20 years ago, uh, 20 years ago, you could rent commercial space fairly close in for $12 a square foot, so I don't think we were worrying too much about affordable commercial space. 10 years ago is when I really saw, uh, sea change coming and started trying to raise this issue with local officials, but, um, unfortunately, I was not persuasive enough, so I'm glad to see that we're doing something about it now. I'm also really intrigued by the possibility with Mercy Corps Northwest and the Community Investment Trust platform they just rolled out, uh, as well as commercial land trusts. So, I don't know if that's something that Prosper Portland would get involved in, but that would be a way to create, oh, the feedback is really hitting to me tonight, sorry, everybody, permanently affordable commercial space while allowing business owners to build equity in their building.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're, we're really intrigued by the land trust model. I don't think we've know a lot about it here, and, um, you know, nationally, commercial land trusts are less well-known, but that's something I'm literally actively researching, uh, looking at how we're approaching that. There was a team that went to Purpose Built Communities Conference in, um, early October, and that's one of the tools that Purpose Built was looking at. Uh, so I think we're, you know, we're open to it. I think anything that's going to, um, put a dent in this as the market continues to collide with realities, the retail environment is really just very tough, too. So, to the extent that we have any control over commercial space that can make it not just more affordable, but more accessible generally, because some of the challenges that people face are not just financial, but kind of technical, like how do you get this building up to code in order to have a business there? That's also some part of what the support we're offering is.
Up until 10 months ago, I'd been a small independent bookseller for 22 years, so-
Oh, goodness.
I definitely know.
I wrote a book store for 15 years. We should talk.
Oh, wow, yeah, for sure.
Great. Thank you very much, and colleagues, any further questions? Any public testimony on this item, Carla?
No one signed up.
Is there anybody you'd like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to accept the report.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fish, a second from Commissioner Fritz. Please call the roll.
Udaley?
Thank you for your presentation. I.
Fritz?
Thank you. This is really exciting, and I think you're talking about the 106th and Halsey. That's definitely, uh, people here who may have small businesses, so I hope that you'll have plenty of cards to hand out, um, and also that, as I said, that it will be a very open and well-publicized process to decide who should get these-
We'll make sure of it.
Spaces. I.
Fish?
Yeah, thank you for an excellent report, and when the pilot is completed and we have more information, one of the things I'd like to see is to have, uh, perhaps even consider a, a right of first refusal on publicly financed projects where you get a chance to go in and scope it out and figure out whether it's economical, good location, you have the financing, um, because this is a community asset, and this, I think this model is spot-on, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, and for, uh, commissioners, for your attention.
I, I haven't voted yet. I might, who, who knows? Oh, I'm-
Wheeler?
So, uh, obviously, I'm thrilled with the new direction of Prosper Portland, and I think this is a great example of the direction that we're going to see Prosper Portland go under new leadership. Uh, I like three aspects of this in particular, like the fact that you're focusing on small business, and small business is not only the major employer in this city, it also is a source of wealth generation. And, yeah, economic prosperity is, is something that is central to our objective in Prosper Portland. Uh, the technical assistance and the financial assistance are equally important, uh, in terms of focus. I don't think we can be successful without those kinds of successes we've seen with the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiatives and some of the other efforts, that that technical assistance combined with the financial assistance is absolutely critically important, particularly if we're serious about the equity play here. And I appreciate the fact that you raised the equity play front and center as being critically important. Uh, the reason we wanted to present this here in East Portland is we believe that the template will be particularly successful in East Portland, which is the most diverse area in our entire community, and that's why we've chosen two of the pilots to be here in particular. Uh, so we'll look forward to continuing to work with EPAP and others, uh, the neighborhood associations to talk about how this is unfolding as, as it unfolds. I vote aye. The report is accepted. Thank you for your testimony. Next item, please, Carla.
Item 1221, accept the 2017 Mill and Midland Parks Combined Master Plan as a guide for future use and development of the parks.
Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm very excited that you're all here tonight. I hope you found that as interesting as I did and that you will pass along to your friends who are small business, um, managers and owners to, um, contact Prosper Portland. Um, I'm very excited to be in charge of Portland Parks and Recreation and to have the opportunity to talk about these three parks, uh, plannings that we've been doing in East Portland with you, um, thanks to an appropriation from the council last year. We wanted to make sure that the community who will be benefiting most from these parks was front and center of the whole community, um, engagement, and also that we would make it easy for you to be here tonight, and I'm absolutely thrilled at the turnout tonight. Thank you so much. Um, council meetings are very important. That's, this is where we operate, this is where we make decisions and, um, get information on the projects like the one that you just saw, and so that was, um, I'm hoping that we'll be able to have more, um, items here in East Portland, whether or not they happen to be directed, particularly as these master plans do. So, before I turn it over to the Parks team, I just want to thank David Douglas High School and the, um, catering students who gave us a lovely dinner, and, uh, the custodians who are doing all the setup. Also, um, Open Signal, thank you for your amazing work getting the system working here. Uh, the East Portland Action Plan and East Portland Neighborhood Office were our partners in getting the word out about this, so we're very, very grateful for your, um, partnership. And then, uh, the council clerk, um, and the mayor's office, and everybody else who's helped to put this on, we are glad that we were able to work with you on this. Uh, and also, last thing on my staff, Goldan Salazar, Christina Nieves, Tim Crayle, and Pooja Bart, worked extremely hard over the last several weeks to make sure that this happened. So, thanks to them, and with that, I'll turn it over to Parks Director, Michael Bate.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor, members of council, Michael Bate, Director of Portland Parks and Recreation. It really is significant that we're here in East Portland to share the Park Master Plan, uh, designs to improve two local parks, Mill Park and Midland Park, as well as create a new one at Southeast 150th and Southeast Division, which, uh, for convenience sake, we call D150. Uh, many people have helped shape these parks. They reflect the best ideas, innovations, and approaches brought together by a unique collaboration of community partners and staff. And so, we're very pleased to present these community-supported designs and introduce key partners who helped shape these three vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive park spaces. You'll hear briefly from the project managers who will introduce the community engagement process used to develop these park designs, and then we'll hear from key community, uh, partners who will be sharing their favorite park features. I'll be joined tonight by a Parks Project Managers, Maya Agarwal and Jamie English. Um, and I also want to recognize in the audience two of the stellar local landscape architecture firms who helped develop these plans. Um, and they're not just beautiful, but they're community-based, and I, so I want to thank Greenworks Landscape Architects for the master plans for Mill and Midland Park, and Mayor Reed for the development of the D150 Park.
Can I just interrupt for one second to remind you that we have, um, community engagement liaisons giving translation, so if you could talk slowly so that they, they can, uh, translate for people here, that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Can everybody here in the back sort, sort of, okay, you have to pull a little closer. Great, thanks.
Okay, I'll, uh, speak slowly. Um, I also want to just mention that, uh, Friday night, the, uh, community engagement process for D150 was awarded, uh, a, uh, an award from the American Society of Landscape Architects, Oregon Chapter, in the Communication Division, uh, distinct, which really goes to the public involvement process that, uh, all three of these parks have enjoyed. So, um, tonight, I'd like to introduce Jenny Glass, who is a Parks Board member, uh, PAC member, and the Executive Director of the Rosewood Initiative, and to be followed by Linda Robinson from the East Portland Parks Committee. So, Jenny.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners. Um, it's really exciting to have you here in East Portland to hear from us about the future of parks, and, um, thank you for being here with open ears and open hearts and a commitment to serve this under, under-resourced neighborhood. So, as Mike said, I'm speaking to you tonight first and foremost as a resident east of 82nd, also as the Executive Director of the Rosewood Initiative and a member of the Portland Parks Board, a member of East Portland Action Plan, and an advisory committee member from D150, is that what we're saying? Needs a new name. East Portland community members, um, desperately need safe and healthy places to play and gather, and I think we all already know this. That's why Commissioner Fritz and Portland Parks have dedicated time and resources to develop these master plans. And the completion of these plans shows that the city is dedicated to making these investments in the well-being of East Portland community members, and we are ready to work with you on securing funding for all of these plans so that they can become a reality in the near future. I had a really good time participating in the process for Southeast 150th and Division Park. Hundreds of people were able to give their input through a variety of really creative and, and inclusive events. I want to thank the park staff, the community liaisons, the partner organizations, and all of the community members that came out to the many events to share their experience and ideas. Uh, I left one of the engagement sessions so inspired, there were different language groups and people of all ages and abilities designing their park together, moving soccer fields and splash pads around a huge map and trying to fit in every element they wanted into their park. It was fun and engaging, and people were talking and laughing together and excited about every piece they were able to include in, in their vision of a park. When I came back to our next advisory committee meeting, um, the amazing designers had somehow managed to fit almost every element the community wanted into the plan, most notably the splash pad, which was non-negotiable for everybody. Um, it's an absolutely beautiful design plan because it was the community that was able to create it. My favorite element is actually just outside the park, though. It's a crosswalk located at 151st and Division. This, to me, highlights the recognition that a park is only useful and beautiful if you can get there easily and safely. The challenges in East Portland go beyond adding the facility of a great new park or any other investment. We're required to think more comprehensively about things like culturally responsive designs, connectivity, displacement, and safety. It's encouraging to me that we're starting to align these investments in East Portland that will help knit together a safe and healthy community. So, thank you so much for your support of these three parks and your ongoing prioritization of equity for East Portland.
Okay, I have to push the button. Okay, um, my name's Linda Robinson, and as many of you know, I've been a park advocate in East Portland for more than 30 years since we were annexed, and, uh, this is an exciting day for me. Um, I, at this time, I am, I lead the East Portland Parks Coalition, which is a group that we formed in 2002 with the express purpose of getting more parks, uh, purchased and developed in East Portland. So, this is an exciting step for us. One of the things I wanted to address tonight is that, um, is the importance of getting these master plans. Uh, we worked, one of the first things that we took on when we formed the East Portland Parks Coalition was urging the city to do some master planning for some of the larger parcels, parcels that they had purchased, um, and, and the city was criticized, uh, a number of times for doing master plans for parks that they had no money to, to develop, but we felt it was really important. In fact, we pressed to get those master plans done. We urged you to do it because we had looked into the possibility of, of applying for grants, we had looked into possibility of various funding sources. All of them said they wouldn't even talk to you unless there was a master plan in place. And at that time, in the, uh, early 2000s, there, we were thinking about a, a possible park bond measure, that was before the deep, before the recession, and, and how do you know how much to ask for in a bond measure if you don't have a master plan, so you don't have any idea of what you're going to build? So, for those of us in East Portland, I know we get, we get restless and we get eager and, you know, once those master plans are in place, and some of them are in place for 10 years or more before they're built, but, but we really, we would like to get one in place for all of our parks. We have a few of the larger parks that still need one, and we have a whole lot of smaller parks that if they're, if a master plan is required before they can develop, we'd like to get a master plan in place. Um, we have another goal also as part of the East Portland Parks Coalition, and that is, uh, to get at least a walking path, a place to sit, and a sign in all of our parks. We have a number of parks that are nothing but a vacant lot, uh, so if we could, a park is much more usable if you have a place to sit and tie your shoe while you're walking your dog. So, you know, we hope to get that, that, we did that in several parks through the, uh, the E205 Initiative, which Nick Fish initiated several years ago. We weren't able to do that in all of them. We'd like to get that in all of them. And then, as we can, you know, get these, more master plans done and then develop the parks, but we realize, you know, we have to go one step at a time, and this is a big step, and we're really excited about this. So, we- So we thank you, Amanda, for allowing the money that made these master plans possible.
Good evening, I'm Maya Agarwal, Project Manager for the Mill and Midland Park Combined Master Plan Project.
And I'm Jamie English, Project Manager for one of our newest parks, Southeast 150th Avenue and Division Street Park Property, lovingly referred to as D-150.
And this evening, we'll share with you some of the unique features of our community outreach and planning process. And then we'll take you on a tour of Mill Park, Midland Park and Southeast 150th and Division. So let's start by talking about the communities that these parks will serve. The neighborhoods surrounding the parks are vibrant, multicultural, multilingual communities. Many of the residents are families with seniors and children, and many are our city's newest Portlanders. Let me remind you of the makeup of some of these neighborhoods. The neighborhoods surrounding all three parks contain high concentrations of limited English proficiency populations. All three park service areas have a higher percentage of people of color when compared to the city of Portland as a whole. All three park service areas have a higher percentage of households below poverty status when compared to the city of Portland as a whole. And once improved, Mill Park will serve 2,215 households, Midland Park will serve 1,578 households, and Southeast 150th and Division will serve 2,800 households. The goal of this outreach was equally to plan parks and build long-term relationships with the communities that will consider these parks their backyards. In order to design parks which best serve these dynamic neighborhoods, we collaborated with many community partners, including those from underrepresented, low-income refugee and immigrant communities. A community advisory committee, composed of individuals representing many community organizations, provided expertise to guide the park design. You'll be hearing from these key partners in a few minutes. The landscape architecture firms, Mayor Reed and Greenworks, as well as the park's public involvement team collaborated on delivering this planning process. A multi-bureau technical advisory committee advised the design team on the logistics of delivering the proposed parks.
Community engagement liaisons, or CELLS, are community leaders and language translators who provided cultural, language-specific outreach for this planning process. This enhanced the quality of participation and improved the park design and strengthened community relationships. A party in the park kicked off the master planning process with a multilingual event, welcoming community members to the park sites to share their ideas about potential park features and activities. In total, we met with the larger community at four different points in the planning process. At each meeting, we shared a meal and engaged in hands-on, family-friendly activities, utilized pictures and drawings to communicate and gather input. In addition, small focus group meetings provided opportunities for more in-depth conversations about the details of the designs. For many, this was their first opportunity to participate in shaping their city and to work with Portland Parks. The following plans are a result of this planning process. We'll start with Mill and Midland. You can turn to the first page in your 11 by 17 handouts, or the page 11 in the slideshow that's in front of you.
And I'd like to invite our community partners to join me, and they'll be helping with this presentation. Portland acquired Mill and Midland Parks from Multnomah County in 1986, and neighbors have been waiting over 30 years to see recreational developments in the parks. We developed the master plans for Mill Park and Midland Park in a concurrent process, leveraging an opportunity to balance the recreational activities provided by each park. We worked with a consulting landscape architecture firm, Greenworks. The Mill Park Master Plan responds to the need for inclusion of people of all ages and abilities. Located adjacent to Mill Park Elementary School, the plan provides active recreation opportunities, such as playgrounds, water play on a hot summer day, and a flexible open green space for soccer and community events. The plan welcomes community gatherings at its picnic shelter and gathering area, and also welcomes individuals who prefer to stroll along a walking path, tend a plot in the community garden, or build their strength using the outdoor fitness equipment. Located approximately one-half mile from Mill Park and adjacent to Midland Library, Midland Park is a unique small site that has many mature trees and offers natural habitat. The master plan for Midland Park maintains the park's unique forested character and enhances wildlife habitat with additional native plantings. The master plan reflects community desires for interaction with nature, education and quiet reflection. And similarly, it includes gathering spaces, places to play, such as a playground, game tables and a forest discovery path, and it promotes a strong connection to Midland Library with a reading area near the library windows. Now, it's my pleasure to welcome our community partners to share their thoughts about the importance of these park plans.
Hello, my name is Maron Samir. I would like to thank City Council for coming out to East Portland. For a while, they haven't been coming out for city council hearings out here, and it's been really great that you have come out here tonight. So I joined the Public Action Committee for Mill and Midland Park when I was in seventh grade, and I was 12 years old, and I have been volunteering at the library for a long time. And I still volunteer there today. Midland Park is right next to Midland Library, so it has a great relationship, because many people go through the park just to get to the library. And when I heard about the committee, I heard it from Patrick, and he encouraged me to join. And what motivated me to really join was, I used to live in downtown, and I remember the parks being really nice, but when I moved out to East Portland, when I was around elementary school, the parks weren't that nice. Like usually I weren't allowed to go to the parks because they were deemed unsafe. So I was really excited to see that they would actually recruit youth to actually join in this type of process, which usually they don't usually want youth to be a part of, usually it's such adult-led. And as you know, East Portland has higher concentrations of immigrants and refugees, which is a community that has been ignored for many years and is often unheard, and there's a lot of barriers when doing this type of outreach to them, because there is a language barrier often. And I was glad that they have provided translators at community meetings and have them put them nearby in the neighborhood instead of all the way in downtown, such as Midland Library, which we have worked with. And the process was really great, because like they really listened to my opinion, and they also, we based off everything what the community wanted, not just what we want as a committee that was like all secret and like just closed off. And I would love to see this park built before I go off to college and be able to go there, because before, I would always go visit my aunts and my cousins, and they lived near the parks, and we weren't allowed to go to the parks because it was unsafe. But when it's finally, like, there's a lot of commuters and like people and pedestrians going through, it's probably become a safer place, because we drive out like bad things and negativity. So when I go off to college, before I go off to college, in a few years, I would like to see the parks built and be able to be usable, like a real park that is, you can go hang out with your friends and have picnics and spend time with your family.
How many years do we have till you go off to college?
I'm a freshman currently. I run high schools.
All right, four years. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I'm Patrick Provant with Multnomah County Library. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Mill and Midland Park Master Plan. We were happy to host public meetings about this effort at Midland Library. Because of the proximity of Midland Park to Midland Library, the community has a shared experience of these two amenities. The library is grateful to the Parks Bureau for its efforts to engage library staff and patrons, including youth, as stakeholders in this process. The library supports this work and looks forward to a future in which the highest and best vision of Midland Park becomes a reality, complementing everything we do at the library and contributing to an even more healthy and vibrant neighborhood. Thank you.
We're ready to move on to hear about 150th and Division. If you'd please turn to the last design among your 11 by 17 handouts, or page 16 in the slide presentation.
So the master plan for the future park at Southeast 150th Avenue and Southeast Division Street reflects diverse communities' needs for recreation activities such as playing soccer or splashing in cool water, and also responds to the strong community desire for a gathering space for groups and families. The design creates a heart of the park, with group picnic and recreation space centered near the community garden and playground. The large community garden and fenced dog off-leash area anchor the park and bring daily visitors year-round. A landmark entrance at Division Street features a summer splashing water feature, a flexible open place for community events and programs. And this work was completed along with Mayor Reed Landscape Architects. I would like to welcome our community partners to share their favorite features of the design.
Okay, push the button?
Yep, there you go.
Okay, thanks. My name is Lynn Spidler Hanlon, and I have had my business on 122nd Division for 25-plus years. It's a small tax business. I represent the Midway Business Association, and all three of these parks are in our district, and all of our members are really excited about improving and developing these parks. We believe that developing these parks and the resulting increased positive use will bring an increased sense of security and community. This is important to all of our businesses, retail, restaurants, professional services, property management, whatever. For the retail folks, and some of our service business and the restaurants for sure, they're particularly excited about the fact that the parks will draw more people to be out and about in the area, and the community that that promotes. We are, and of course, all of our businesses, really welcome to have these parks in the area so that we can have a good place to go and take breaks for us and our employees. Sorry. We're especially interested in having the functional, these functional public spaces for public gatherings of all kinds, from small picnics to events like the Festival of Nations, and this is especially true with the 150th and Division Park. We need, we need public spaces to gather other than each other's parking lots. And, sorry, we really need this open space, a plaza with services, drinking fountains, bathrooms, garbage cans, whatever, so that we can host our events, our celebrations and picnics and just community events. This provides a much-needed heart for this community. And for me, the best single feature of the 150th Park is the community garden, and I'm excited about there being a community garden in the Mill Park as well. The 150th Community Garden is a wonderful place to visit. It has a wide variety of plantings and some very intriguing gardening methods, utilizing materials that would otherwise be discarded, and a great deal of labor from the people that it serves. This garden serves and is maintained by a group of Bhutanese immigrants, bringing a measure of food security to their families, a lot of them. And there are many things that are grown there, the usual tomatoes and squashes and greens and whatnot that we would all recognize, and also many plants that I did not recognize. And I was excited at one of the gatherings to talk to some of the farmers, sometimes with translators, because, yeah, language barriers. Some of those things that I did not recognize were plants that are grown from seeds that they saved from their native countries through the refugee camps in some instances and to Portland. So it's pretty incredible. And it's, it's really an amazing place. And also, from a practical standpoint, this garden has already created an increased sense of security in the park and the surrounding area, and because, because of the frequent presence of the people that work in the community garden, they're there all the time, year-round. And many of the neighbors that surround the park, who initially were a little skeptical of the community garden, they grew to absolutely love it, because it has already increased the security. There's just, yeah, they feel safe walking around there where they once didn't. So it's, it's a really fabulous place, and I strongly encourage all of you to go visit it if you possibly can. I, I'm here to strongly encourage the city council to improve the designs in front of you, and further, I would like the funding process to be fast-tracked. If we can get this 150th and the other two, Mill and Midland, in the next four years, great, we got a deadline there. I'd like these fast-tracked. We really need this in this community desperately. And also, how can we, the local business community, help? Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Lorette. I am here representing our Human Solutions, a nonprofit here locally, that's actually come up during the meeting, that was fun to hear. And specifically, the community at Arbor Glen Apartments. It's a 96-unit apartment building located on 145th and Division, so an easy walk over to the proposed site. Through the process of developing this master plan, there was a lot of feedback from residents that got given to me that I then took to the planning meeting. And some of the things that I wanted to share was the logic behind why these features are important for this community. Within the location of 150th and Division, there are a lot of apartment complexes. Most of them do not have air conditioning in the units. If people have access to air conditioning, it's because they're putting in a window unit. We all know it's been getting really hot during the summer, and there's no easy access to cooling-off methods. A lot of the families in the area may not have access to a vehicle, so they rely on public transit. And because of the way buses, bus lines run in this part of town, they're not able to just hop on a bus and get to a pool easily. It's usually multiple buses or a mile walk to get to the closest pool. So having a splash pad in the area would provide that public health piece of a place where people can go and cool off in hot temperatures and a place for people to gather. Most of them, a lot of people don't have the funds for bus fare to be able to go and do it, nor do they have the capacity to pay to take a family of six into a community pool setting. So having that cheaper, free, easy-access source of cooling would be important. The skate park and basketball court were brought in because a lot of the youth I work with mentioned that those were both things important to them. There aren't places for teenagers to hang out where they don't get hassled. There's not a space for them to connect and engage in an activity that is healthy, that's exercise, that builds community support between peers, because there's not a business where they can go, there's not a space where they can go without having to take multiple buses or pay money. And so these two activities are ones that are really popular with the residents at my property and also in the surrounding community. So they would be of value. So, they would be a valuable asset for positive activities to be happening with our youth, for them to be able to grow and develop into good, strong participants in their community. The dog off-leash area, again, a lot of people are living in apartments very close to this park. They have service animals, they have companion animals, they have loved family pets. There's no space for them to take those animals on a walk. There's a deficit of sidewalks. Many of the streets don't even have much of a shoulder and if it is a shoulder, it's a little wonky and not really safe to walk on. The lighting is poor, so when it gets dark early in the winter and fall, there's not a safe place for them to take those animals. So, the off-leash dog area, since it's fenced in, provides that space where people can take their animals in a safe place. And the play area is sort of a similar thing where it benefits children. It provides that social connection, interaction, families meeting families they might not meet otherwise, in a safe environment with access to toys. A lot of the apartment complexes do not have areas for kids to play, much less a playground. And again, access to playgrounds in this part of town is really difficult unless you own a vehicle. The pavilion picnic area, I had a lot of residents super excited about. They have children, they want to have birthday parties, they want to have celebrations, they want to have family gatherings. They live in an apartment and there's no space for them to do those things. So, having that covered pavilion and having that space to be able to have celebrations and community connections and birthday parties without having to pay a lot of money to a business to host it is really important. And it provides that opportunity for neighbors to connect with each other. All of the features in the park were sort of designed as a way to enhance community connections, enhance building. The flow at the top was intentionally designed to where there's activity spaces that can also function as spaces to have festivals for the community, maybe a farmer's market or a concert in the park. It was intentional that we designed it in such a way that it meets day-to-day needs but could also meet a specific one-time event need because both of those are lacking in this part of the city. So, I appreciate your time coming out. I've been in this community since 2004. It has changed a lot over time and it's starting to change in safer ways and it's a much healthier community, but at the same time, I want to see the people who live here now live here in 10 years and be able to continue to live here. And that's been addressed earlier in the meeting. So, thank you for coming out. Your support of building this park as well as the other two parks that have been proposed will really help people in this section of town feel like City Council cares about them and that's something that I think is a definite deficit. A lot of people feel very unseen, very unheard. And so, having these parks is a very tangible way of showing that we do care about you, that you are important and valuable and can contribute to our city. So, thank you for your support in moving forward with the construction of these parks and I look forward to being able to take the kids I serve over to play at the park soon.
Thank you.
So, I have one question. You know, I'm thrilled with the community garden components of two of the three plans and I was just curious, in the 1.2 acres that's set aside for community gardens at 150th and Division, how many plots, how many normal-sized plots can you fit into 1.2 acres?
That's a great question. That's a great question. Right now, what we've shown is plots that are large enough to serve a family of six and this is through one of our partners, Outgrowing Hunger, which is a nonprofit. So, these are actually larger plots and I apologize, I don't have the exact number that we are able to fit in there, but we can get that information for you.
Well, I just, we added 1,000 new community gardens when I was Parks Commissioner because there was such a demand. And then we found that we were serving places in the, you look at the map, we were serving places where there was a tremendous amount of demand because people were very empowered and we weren't doing enough in areas where people's voices were not as loud or weren't heard as well. And so, to build this kind of capacity for gardens, community gardens in two of our three East Portland parks is just fantastic. So, love to know later how many it actually translates into, but I think it's a tremendous community asset.
And we can follow up with that information. I want to thank you both for helping share the story for 150th and Division and I'd also like to invite Maya and Mike back up to help answer any further questions that Commissioners might have.
I just wanted to comment on Commissioner Fish's question about the community gardens. I think when you see the picture...
Yes, well done.
The Outgrowing Hunger has taught me that it's a different kind of setup, that it's not kind of the very formal with large spaces in between. It's making use of as much of the ground as possible. I didn't know that they've been sowing seeds that had come all the distance from their former countries. That's just beautiful. So...
And our consultant was helpful and answered the question. It's 90 plots that we're able to accommodate there.
Any further questions, colleagues? Carla, do we have public testimony on this item?
Do you want to say anything else before we wrap up?
No, I don't believe so. Commissioner, we're just available for any questions.
Thank you.
If you want to just cool your heels, we'll take it. Sounds like we have some people signed up for public testimony. Great, thank you.
I show nine people signed up. The first three, please come on up, are Kelly Fitzpatrick, me, Lovejoy, Elizabeth Nelson.
So, you'll each have three minutes to testify. Carla, I'm sorry, I'm not as familiar with this system. Do they get a yellow light up there?
It should be green on theirs.
So, green at 30 seconds?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's right here.
Oh, it's just this thing right here?
I thought you had the microphones.
Okay, so, three minutes to testify. If you have really, really good eyesight, you can see the clock. I believe the yellow light will go on about 30 seconds before and then the red light will go on when your time is up. And if you don't remember, don't worry about it. We'll take care of it. Good evening. If you just state your name for the record, we don't need your address.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kelly Fitzpatrick and I am a board member of the Mill Park Neighborhood Association. As a resident of outer east Portland, I am a major proponent of all three of these master plans to improve our parks out here. Currently, I have two very energetic dogs who could really benefit from off-leash time. Unfortunately, one of my dogs is extremely carsick and every time I bring him in the car, he throws up. So, you can imagine that I do not want to take him in the car to one of the dog parks that are farther away, ever, really. More so, you know, in the near future, I am planning on becoming a parent and I can see these parks being an integral part of my family's life for years to come. But, you know, there are already so many families who live out here who could already be benefiting from these parks, so I believe it's a major issue. You know, I can imagine that when my kids are just babies, that I would be walking around the perimeter of these parks with their stroller and have my dogs with me so I could get a chore done with my kids. When they grow a little bit older, I could see us using the playgrounds and having snacks under the picnic shelter and if they're potty training, they'll have restrooms that will be there so I don't have to worry about accidents happening or have to rush home every time we need to use the bathroom. As they grow a little bit older, they can use the skate spot and the basketball courts and the soccer fields to play with their friends and be on school teams and we don't have to leave our area of town and create more congestion on our streets, which we know is an ever-growing issue in our city. And lastly, we can use our community gardens to grow our food and to give back to the community and use the nature spots and the pollinator gardens to learn and explore and really see what it takes to keep Portland green. So, in conclusion, I'd just like to thank you for having this City Council out in eastern Portland for us to make it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you and a very good testimony. Thank you. Carla, I'm going to ask you to read 1222 into the record since the Parks Bureau has done both presentations, so we'll read 1222 and then people can be commenting on any of these plans.
1222, accept the 2017 Southeast 150th Avenue and Division Street Park Property Master Plan as a guide for future use and development of the park.
Thank you. Sorry, just a technical requirement. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mai Lovejoy and I live in Mill Park. First, I want to thank you all for being here in our neighborhood to hear from all of us and thanks to the Parks Department for all of your efforts to beautify our neighborhood. If you haven't had a chance yet to visit these park locations, the proposed locations, I urge you to do so. I ask you to walk around in their current iterations, take in the sights, take in the smells, watch out for broken glass and syringes, and imagine what these parks could be like if you approved these master plans. I've lived in Mill Park for about two years and every single day, rain or shine, I've walked my dogs around this neighborhood. I often go to the parks around my neighborhood to play fetch, but actually, I don't go to Mill Park or Midland Park, mostly because I'm concerned about my own safety and my dog's safety. From what I've seen of Mill Park from the windows of Midland, or, excuse me, of Midland Park from the windows of the Midland Library, it's not really a place that I would feel safe spending much time. That's why I urge you to approve these master plans, to curate and improve these spaces and offer opportunities for myself and for my neighbors to walk, sit, play, and enjoy the outdoors safely and sustainably. We're proud of our vibrant neighborhood and these master plans are a reflection and an embodiment of that pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Nelson. I live in the Russell neighborhood, though that is not the neighborhood in which the parks are officially servicing. In truth, they would service our neighborhoods as well because Midland Library is the local community library for much of northeast Portland and the park there is right now extremely unsafe. It is unsafe because it has become a place for homeless to gather and sleep and live and because of that, no one goes near that park unless they absolutely have to. And so, creating a space where children can be and where people can actually feel safe to go is extremely important, but it's also important to remember that these homeless people are all over east Portland and we need to find a solution that gets them out of our parks, out of our trails and into sustainable housing because even if we do build these parks, nothing is going to get them out of the parks until we find a solution for them as well as the parks. Because there is syringes, there's garbage, and most of them do not want to live there. Most of them do not want to live there. Most of them are native Portlanders who have had hard times because of the raising of rents and personal problems that have caused them to lose their housing and forced out into these parks. They don't want to be there any more than we want them there. And this City Council needs to find a solution that not only makes the parks pretty, but makes them safe by finding a solution for the homeless in Portland. Because it has been east Portland that has taken the brunt of this problem. If you go down the I-205 trail, if you still go some parts of the Spring Water Trail, if you go into the Lentz neighborhood, if you go into the Russell neighborhoods, you will see homeless camps still today using our parks and our open spaces as their living rooms. And this is not fair to us as the homeowners and it is not fair to the homeless who are forced to take this action because they don't feel safe in a lot of the solutions that you've given or they are only short-term solutions that do not solve the long-term problems of homelessness in this city.
So, let me quickly address that because I don't want to take the conversation away from the Parks conversation, but I do want to address this issue. Between the city and the county, as you know, we created the Joint Office of Homeless Services two years ago. Collectively, we've now invested over $100 million in prevention services, shelter services, housing, and in addition to that $100 million, the county invests heavily in drug addiction, alcohol addiction, and mental health services. We significantly increased the funding this year for what we call livability issues. So, that's trash collection, needle collection, graffiti abatement. We expanded foot patrols, we expanded park rangers, particularly on the east side. We are focusing on what we believe are humane solutions. We've had a lot of questions raised about the need for more emergency shelter. We actually have doubled the number of shelter beds that are available in this community over the course of the last two years. We're working with our state and our federal partners. You mentioned the footpath. That's actually an ODOT facility and so, we've been working with the state to get ODOT the resources they need for a compassionate response. And I always want to separate the question of criminal activity or the issue of criminal activity from homelessness. There are people on the streets who are truly vulnerable, who are struggling with addiction or mental health issues or economic issues. We want compassionate solutions and we also want to uphold community standards and the law. And so, we're approaching this very much from a full spectrum. The situation is horrific and we on this council know it. Just in my office alone, we get about 700 calls a week and we spend a considerable amount of our time and resource on this issue. And just this morning, the City Council voted another almost $2 million dedicated specifically to the issue of mitigating the homeless crisis in our community. So, I want you to know, we do take it very, very seriously and we are very much aware that it is a serious crisis here in our community. So, thank you for raising that. I appreciate it. Commissioner Fritz?
I wanted to add to that, that there are people living outside in parks in every neighborhood in this city, including mine. So, it's, in some ways, it might be easier to address if it was in just one area. It's not. It's pervasive. Before we go on with testimony, Commissioner Fish needs to leave and so, I was asked if he could please give his votes and his comments so that he can get going.
Thank you and I'll be very brief and I apologize that I have to leave. After a 12-hour day, I've hit my maximum and I'm struggling with some health issues and I just, I got to get home and get into bed. First of all, we need to do more hearings like this out in the community. And I know from the community standpoint, we're more accessible when we come to you. Frankly, from our point of view, more people show up with diverse points of view, so it's actually very beneficial to us. So, it's a win-win. Commissioner Fritz is probably our greatest champion for scheduling these evening hearings so that people that are raising families or doing two jobs or just, you know, managing life can come and attend a City Council meeting more easily. So, I applaud and we heard from some other testifiers about that, so I hope we do more of them. Second, before Commissioner Fritz was the Parks Commissioner, I had the honor of having parks for about four years and we did a lot of master plans over that period of time. And so, I became kind of a student of how you do these things, engaging the public, the design. I was here earlier with Amanda. We were here at, I think, 5:00 where we got to do the pre-council meeting presentation on the designs. I met a number of you as we had dinner and talked about the design. I just want to say personally, I think these are three of the most well-conceived and beautiful parks of their kind and I compliment the community that has helped shape this because it is ultimately your vision, working with professionals, that helps lead to these really stunningly beautiful parks. And finally, over the last four or five years, I forget the total amount, but Commissioner Fritz has taken money from the bond, from systems development charges, from the general fund, from every single pot, including a little drawer that Zerry Santner had that had some money in it. And I think the total we're up to is close to $50 million of new investment in east Portland. Now, given the deficit that we started with, you know, $50 million is a heck of a down payment, but we have more to do. We didn't have this resource called developer fees five or six years ago and we certainly didn't have it during the recession. She has said, "We're going to prioritize spending that money in east Portland." And so, now we have three more beautiful parks that are slated. And here's my commitment... And here's my commitment. As long as I have the honor to serve on the council, I will work with Commissioner Fritz and the Parks Bureau to prioritize the funding to build these parks out. And let's continue to extend the benefits of really a world-class park system that we have in this city to every corner of our city. And I thank you for the work you've done, and the work you've done really compels us to work together to find the funding. So, if I were here in an hour, I would vote A on all three. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. The next three, please. Carla?
Our Brian Flores-G, Danielle Miles, and Rose, I believe the last name is Fields.
Good afternoon, or good evening.
My name is Brian Flores Garcia. My name is Brian Flores Garcia. I am a youth ambassador for Portland Parks and Recreation, and I am also a resident of East Portland. I didn't have anything prepared. I didn't know I was going to be speaking tonight, but since it's something that means so much to me, I figured that it was something that I should do. And since it's a big priority for me to have the youth voice and giving a platform for young people to be able to talk and give their opinions and be a foundational part of the parks that they use, I thought it was really great that you guys came all the way out here and really engaged with us and really gave us an opportunity to talk, which we don't get very often. A lot of us here don't have the time or the place or the, really, the commitment to go out every day, or every week, or every time there's a city council meeting, and I really appreciate the fact that you guys did it here at my own high school. I think, I mean, I spent a lot of time at Midland Library when I was a kid. My parents, they didn't speak English when I was younger, so whenever I needed anything school-related, I mostly went to the library. There was always tutors, there was always librarians, there was always people there to help. And I remember spending a lot of time at Midland Park, walking around with my mom and my sister, walking, looking under bark dust or leaves. I spent a lot of my childhood there, and it means a lot to me that this park is being considered for, I guess, redevelopment, restoration. I don't really know what the word is for it, but I know out of experience that recently, it's become kind of a dangerous place to be. And I want so much for it to be a safe place for people to go to, especially in the community that I've lived in my whole life. And I know that I don't live as close to a park as I would like, but I know I would travel further if there was a park that was beautiful and that I loved and that meant something to me and that really, really just brought it home, you know? Something that I could say, this is part of my community, this is something that I can be proud of, and this is something that they worked to make for me. And it means so much to me to see that there's a master plan as great as the one that there is meant for kids just like me. When I was four, when I was five, when I would do these things with my parents, it means so much to have these things here, and I really, really want to strongly support the creation of these parks, the implementation of all of these safe spaces for teenagers and kids, and even parents, you know? We all need a place to really care about in the community, and for a while, it hasn't felt like there was something that close to me that I could really care about, you know? There's a lot of empty lots where I live, and there's only so much you can do with an empty field. And having a park that's meant for you to play in means so much.
Well said. Thank you.
I want to get on as well, but if you want to get really jazzed, go to Shaver Elementary School in the Park Rose School District and look at the new park that we just opened there, because then you're going to see what yours can be like in a few years' time. Except different, because it's the one that you've designed.
Very good. Thank you for your testimony. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Miles. So, I live in Mill Park neighborhood. My home actually overlooks the park. My son goes to Mill Park Elementary School. I'm a lifelong Portlander also. So, thank you for, thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for investing the money in this design process. And I want to thank everybody who's put time and effort into this. I know it's been a labor of love for a lot of people. I just want to tell you about Mill Park, because that is a big part of my life. If you were to walk around Mill Park on a sunny afternoon, it's true that there's trash and gift graffiti, but you would also see probably dozens, I don't even know, maybe more than 60 children playing in the park. There would be probably three informal soccer games. There would probably be games that I don't recognize, because they come from, they come along with people from other countries that they've brought with them. If you walk around Mill Park, you will hear children playing in a variety of languages, and that is what makes it so precious. Mill Park is bordered on two sides by apartment complexes. Many of those apartments are the homes to the children who go to Mill Park Elementary School. So, Mill Park Elementary School is 65% active English language learners. It's 100% free and reduced lunch. 65% active English language learners is a really high percentage, one of the highest in Portland. Many of those children are newcomers, refugee families. So, to me, I'm very excited about us gaining access to a beautiful space, and I'm also concerned about displacement. And what would it look like to put anti-displacement measures along with a proposal like this? Because our community is so much more than the structures that you see when you drive through it. Our community is unique because of the many cultures that call it home. And it would just be a shame for us to beautify this park with the input of these people and with these people in mind, and then for them to not be able to enjoy it once that ribbon-cutting ceremony comes through. So, I ask, along with some of the conversations that happened earlier, what are ways that we can keep this community intact and also improve the parks? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, the mayor and commissioners, my name is Ngoc Yip. I work as a sales for these parks. So, yeah, I'm excited, you know, to work with the park of, you know, these parks. So I help my community to do the outreach and do the survey and share the resources about, to the Vietnamese community. So I pray, hopefully you can share about that.
Very good.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Rose. I thank you God, because I've been this country. I really humble God, and because God bless Americans, and I, God bless, bless Americans and call over me. That's why I'm happy being here. And I'm really happy, because Midland Park have a library, and future, my children, my granddaughter can come library and have fun the park. That's why I'm really happy, because you guys decide the park right nearby the library. Thank you for your guys' foot and log of hours and thinking about future for the children. And I hope so, the future, God will let all the renovation, no homeless anymore. Every day, I thank you God, because I have a house to live, and I sad for them, because no house, living cold. Sometimes I sick, I feel I have a land to cover, but that, many people out the street, I'm really sad. I thank you God every day. I thank you, because God bless Americans, and they, they let me come here and enjoy honey and milk. I thank you God, and God bless your guys. Thank you God every day. And thank you, you guys thinking about future for the park, for the children. And I hope so, the library will, my children, my, all the nation will come together and learn how many culture and share and love and read the Bible and read the library book, and future no more homeless. I hope so, God bless Americans every day. Thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
I'd just like to add that we did or are, will be adopting 11 anti-displacement measures with the comprehensive plan, and I've been scrambling to Google them, because, you know, I testified on them like two years ago, and I've forgotten what all of them are. But I share your concerns, and the fact that we've included them in our comp plan isn't enough. We really need communities to demand that we implement them and to hold us accountable, because that comp plan is boxes and boxes of, you know, documents, and I fear that it's going to be easy to lose track of things like that. So, thank you for raising that issue.
Thank you.
The last three I show signed up for this item is Craig Rogers, Arlene Kumora, and Marge Crawford.
Very good. Come on up. Would you like to start? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marge Crawford. I think you might some.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just push that button.
Okay. My name is Marge Crawford. I live near the Mill Park Library. I've been here in the same house since 1993. I just want to get to the point, is that our parks are a place for people to go that have no place to go. So many people, they don't have much money, they never go the beach, they never go the mountains. Everybody needs a happy place to go. And so, I'm talking about mental health. And so, I think these parks are vital for mental health of our community. It can be the break that somebody needs to have before they go back to their family or go back to their job to help them sustain and maintain their lifestyle. It's also intercultural opportunities for people to come together and connect with each other, from different cultures, different backgrounds. Also, I think there needs to be, you know, regarding the homeless people, there needs to be a place that welcomes them. There needs to be a place that welcomes the homeless people. And I would like to propose park stewards that can help these, help people in the parks get along and connect with each other. Because we're ostracizing them by saying, you can't be in our parks. And to show them a way they can be in the parks, and they can be part of a community. They can get support. Also, I would like to propose more lighting in the parks. I only saw one light in most of the parks. So, those are my thoughts on the process, and I think those are really key points. I appreciate all the heart and the head that you put into this, and I'm assuming you're going to vote for this, but the faster we can get this going, the better for our community. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you so much. Arlene, I'd like to give you the last word, if you don't mind, so we'll go to you. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Good evening. My name's. Good evening. My name's Craig Rogers. I lived in this area since 1978. So what I want to share with you is some of my experience and opinions. And this Midland Park, it's beautiful, very beautiful. I wish it was my backyard. I wish I lived in the middle of it, but it's not safe. Safety does not equate to beautiful. And I was there when Midland Library was created, and the park was already there. It was a dedicated bird sanctuary by Mike Houck, and actually, some of it, they were going to build the parking lot into, but we saw that that didn't happen, so the parking lot's the size it is. All the same flowery words were said about it back then, when the library was built, that are being said right now, and look what happened. You know, that's where the park rangers need the tools to enforce standards. And obviously, they aren't there now, so it's to say that they're going to be there in the future unless something different happens. Because I've had areas right around my house and watched them go down. So, park rangers can be an integral part of keeping these safe, beautiful places. And even if there's a 20-hour light, that's not going to be enough, because this is heavy woods around the center core area that you can't see into. So, part of my experience, regrettably, was just probably a quarter mile from Midland Park is Ventura Park. And I was riding my bike path there in the early 80s, and there's a lady just wandering around the middle of the street beside herself. She doesn't know what to do. It was just terrible. And her young boy was missing, and he was there at the park with his older brother. And eventually, they found his DNA at a residence in Oregon City, but they never found his body. So, it ended up in a dumpster, and, you know, if anybody wants, it's just terrible. But that's why we need to make these more than just beautiful. We need to make them safe, safe. The odds in the kids' favor, that, because I've seen it all, I've seen enough that it cycles, that it saves flowery words, and then, look what happens. Like they said, go take a walk in it now. So, please be prudent, make some really intelligent decisions. It's certainty versus risk, possibility versus probability. You want to make the odds in the kids' favor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Arlene, it looks like you get the last word.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Arlene Kumora, and I live in East Portland. And first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for coming out and having a city council hearing here. As you can see from the audience, they absolutely feel that they are part of the city, and it is really important that the people feel recognized, and this coming out has done this. I also want to thank the Parks Bureau staff, Amanda, your leadership, in getting these parks done. It was, I think, a hard-fought battle initially, and we have now seen the value of it. The parks are great. The Parks Bureau has put more money into East Portland in the last few years. I was at the opening of Lewitt View. I look forward to the opening of Gateway Discovery. I also want to say, though, that there is a caution, and that we cannot use the parks as a place for the homeless. And we know all, we all know that, that the anti-displacement strategies that are part of the East Portland Action Plan addresses that, but it takes all of us to work on it. And I want to thank you very much for your patience and for listening, and for this great community that knows what they want, and they're going to work really hard to help you get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks all of you. I'm sorry?
Five more? That was the end of 12:21.
Okay, very good. Next three, please. Sorry.
This is, yeah, for 12:21.
We had them signed up on two separate sheets, so we have five more people. Let me do this, because we're going to, we really want to take the vote and not lose our quorum. So, could the five people who are signed up who have not spoken, could you just come up, state your name, and briefly, briefly make your case? And I apologize for that, but we don't want to lose the quorum. So if you could call those names, please.
Kavina Ignashev, Sherry Womishin, Ron Clemmenson, S.B. Langno, and Marc Boucher-Cobert.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, and I'm sorry, we had some technical difficulties that set us back, but we still want to hear a few words. Thank you. Why don't you go ahead and start, please?
My name is Karina Ignashev, and I represent the Slavic community. And is it okay if I just read it, just short? I just had something prepped. I represent the Slavic community that lives in the southeast Portland, specifically the Division 148th area. And many of our families chose this location years ago because it was affordable, especially for families with kids. And we are a multiple children family. We have 15 in our family alone. And we really, culturally, we really like the outdoors, kids playing outside, but we don't have that in our community at the moment, in our neighborhood. So we either drive elsewhere or just are limited to our backyard. So we either drive elsewhere or just are limited to our backyard. And I'm really excited for this to happen. All the, sorry, for the garden, the dogs' area. And I'm really hoping it's going to happen in the near future rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evenings, and thanks for coming out to East County. My name is Sherry Wilmshin. I've lived in East Portland for 40 years and raised my sons here, and now I have grandchildren. And I live very, very near to 150th and Division. I'm on 154th. So I would be so excited, love the plan, hoping can go forward. And like I've said before, hope it's available to my grandchildren that are two and four before they become too old to use it. I mean, everything in it is something that children can use and families can use and have a fun place. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and thanks for all your hard work on this. Good evening. It's good to see you again.
Good evening. Ron Clemmenson. I've lived out here for 50 years now. I've been a member of the Parks Coalition, East Portland. I want to thank Amanda for coming last week to our meeting, and we renewed our efforts to get something really going. I have a completed master plan. It was in 2009 that that was completed. I've given a email to Amanda, and she can pass that on to you and the rest of the council at her convenience, which gives an outline of what it's about and the costs. So without taking a lot of time to go into that, I would just say, it's time now. It's been almost, well, nine years. And so we've gone that route, and now it's time for boots on the ground and shovels in the ground. And we can do some things to begin the process of developing the Park Lane Park at 155th and Southeast Mill Main. As David Yamashita said several years ago as part of the park's management, "It's a beautiful place, it's a gym, it's a view of Mount Hood, and it's a place where we can recreate." And I hope we can get started on the process next year, early. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Marc Boucher Colbert, and I work at Franciscan Monastery Earth School, which is at 148th and Clinton. And from our property, I can look across to the proposed park at 150th and Division. I'm the garden specialist there, and I've been doing that for the last 11 years. And I know for a fact, from at least nine of the 11 years, and perhaps for a decade prior to that, our grounds, our nine-acre grounds served as the de facto park for the area. We had a policy of open gate after school and during the weekends, and scores of residents would come on to enjoy everything from a full-size soccer field, various play structures, a gravel walking path, et cetera, et cetera, because they didn't have any other facilities around. And we welcomed that, and we reached out to the neighborhood. We had signs posted of welcome and such. Unfortunately, two years ago, we had a serious act of vandalism that burned one of our play structures. Our insurance agents required us to lock the gates, and we have not been able to welcome the public in the same way. That has not stopped people from coming onto our grounds, and it's now one of my unfortunate duties to escort kids, for example, on a summer day, shooting hoops, take them off the grounds. And as I walk, watch them walk away, I wonder, now what are they going to do, you know, in these next two or three hours when they would have spent recreating, having a great time with their buddies? Now they got time on their hands and nothing good to do. So I've had the pleasure of working with Laura LeBret at Arbor Glen. We hold a free summer camp for all comers, gardening and cooking camp. And I, in addition to working with the privileged kids who can attend a private school and enjoy the rich grounds that we offer, I'm happy to work with her and the kids from Arbor Glen. I see the kids as equal. I see them having the same needs and desires. We believe that a rich environment stimulates kids' health and their learning. And so I really want to support this park at 150th and Division. We've held three events at our school. They've been electric, visionary, and joyous. My hat is off to the Parks Department for such inclusion and some just wonderful visioning. And now I think it rests with you to find the money to make this incredible vision happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your testimony. Colleagues, do you have any further questions of Parks Bureau staff? Carla, on item 1221, please call the roll.
You daily?
We have two votes?
We've got two votes, 1221 and 1222.
I'm just going to say aye.
Fritz?
I, I'll make my comments next one.
Wheeler?
I, I want to say one quick thing.
Ah, mayor.
Just quick, just quick. I want to thank you guys. I want to thank Commissioner Fritz, who, who.
We're going to, we're going to do our speeches, but.
I'm sorry?
Chloe and I are going to do speeches, but we're going to do them.
You're going to do it on the second one, then I vote aye. The resolution is adopted. Please call the roll on 1222.
You daily?
Oh, okay. Well, now I will just steal your thunder, thank everyone who came out tonight. By name, no, just kidding. No, I want to thank everyone who helped make this happen, especially Commissioner Fritz. I am a fan of these evening movable meetings, although I'm going to put in a request that they don't come at the end of an 11-hour workday because we've, we've been hearing from a lot of people, and I really want to be able to attend to everyone here. So thanks again for coming. It's, it is really wonderful to see new, new and old faces in the crowd. And I'm really excited about these parks and more excited about possibly moving to East Portland one day. So I vote aye.
Fritz?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Youdali, for being here, and also Commissioner Fisher and the mayor. This is amazing. Thank you so much. This community has put these plans together in a way that maybe they've never been put forward before. And so I was talking with one of the consultants at the gathering beforehand, and she said that the immigrant folks who participated, that they couldn't believe that the government would actually want to know what they think and actually would want to do what they want us to do. And so I know that government often gets a bad rap, but we try. And with each one, we get better. Now, I live seven and a half miles from City Hall. We're about 10 and a half miles here, so I don't live quite as far. But I live in a very park-deficient area until we put in a park in 1995. That is so outdated. Now, the stuff that is going in now is absolutely phenomenal. So if you just want to get even more excited about these three park plans, go to Lewitt View Park, which is next to Shaver Elementary School in the Park Rose School District. It's amazing, even in the middle of winter. I can only imagine what it's going to look like in the summer. So thanks very much to everybody for these amazing plans. I'm struck by how they're so different. The two plans with a very similar process in terms of what the city's doing resulted in three very different plans. The Mill and Midland plan is in three languages. The Division 150 is in five languages. I don't remember ever seeing that before. Linda Robinson said that a park to her has to have a bench and a trail and a sign. My bottom line, it has to have a loo. So I'm really happy to see that all three of these have loos, and that is an essential part of basic services. And so I, I could, could really go on a lot. And I've made copious notes because I do agree with the things about displacement. When you've got these fantastic parks, people are going to be offering you cash to sell your homes to. So we need to get ahead of, we need to be thinking about that now. Now, I mentioned Lewitt, the view, just got done. I don't want to dampen the enthusiasm, but they've been waiting for 40 years to get that particular park from when it was acquired as for a park to that. So we've all got a lot of work to do. I think the Division 150 plan is $19 million approximately. So we may need to do a bond measure. We may need to have other things other than the system development charges that impact fees, because sooner or later, those are going to dry up. And also, they're just not enough for the amount of work that needs to be done here, the amount of investment that you deserve here. So as long as I'm the Parks Commissioner, we will continue to invest here. I want to particularly thank Michael Bate, the director of Portland Parks and Recreation, and the phenomenal changes that have happened in Portland Parks and Recreation under his guidance, all of the staff who are here tonight, Pooja Bart, my senior policy advisor, Christina, my whole team. I'm just so grateful that we were part of this. Aye.
Wheeler?
So I think this has been a lot of fun, and I appreciate this. And I appreciate people who've worked a long day and then came out here to be part of this until 9 o'clock at night tonight. I'm motivated for us to do more of this. I, I think it's great, and I hear from people all the time, you know, we, we do hold city council meetings typically on Wednesday and Thursday, but they're during the day, and they're downtown. And I've always thought that's kind of funny because most people actually work during the day, and it's very difficult for people to get downtown. So I hope we do more of this. I hope this sets a trend. I think this was very successful. Commissioner Fritz, thank you for orchestrating this so that we could talk about the East Portland parks in East Portland. I think that's great. And I want to appreciate the prosper Portland folks who were here earlier, talking about some of the economic development strategies. So at any rate, I'm highly motivated. Thank you for being here. I vote aye. The resolution passes. And we are adjourned till 2 PM tomorrow. Thank you, everybody.